Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Northeast Unified Elementary School District to order. Now, does everybody have access to the or need access to the agenda? Start with that.
I have access to it.
Okay, fine. Let me make sure I have access to it. Got so many screens open here today. I will do people have access to the minutes and I will entertain a a motion to approve those minutes.
Is that what you want to do first?
Well, hold on, do I? I'm trying to find my here. Let's hold on a second.
I think after calling it to order, consider adjustments and amendments to the agenda?
All right, thank you. You're right. I'm trying to pull up. I've got about 11 screens open to see.
No problem.
Okay. Consider adjustments and amendments to the agenda. Indeed, that is item number two. Am I hearing any suggested changes? And you will have to identify yourselves because I can't. I really can't see everybody because I'm a little afraid of closing a couple of these work screens. Any adjustments? Not hearing any. I'll assume that we are. We are going to go with the with the agenda as it was created. So then the next item is in fact communications and public comments. I would like to welcome several of our advisory committee members who are here tonight. If they want to unmute themselves and identify themselves, that would be nice for the record because Josh may not know everybody.
Hi, I'm Charlie Hutchison, Westminster. Glad to be here, so I'll just mute myself and take myself off video and just listen.
All right, if we say anything outrageous, Charles, you know, you just let us know and you can speak up.
I'll put my hand up on the participant thing. Okay, nice to be here.
On, on. Who else is on here?
I'm seeing other advisory folks. I think we're good.
All right, and I'm guessing the Mary Fader in all red is actually David Clark. I'm guessing. David, is that you or is that Mary is on the line? And you'll have to unmute if you wish to speak.
Oh, we're listening in. Thanks.
All right, very good. Will then no comments from anybody?
Jack, I think now, Jess, this is Cheryl. I do think you do want to go back to the approval of the minutes. I'm sorry, I interrupted you before.
My apologies.
No problem.
Then let us review and approve board minutes for for last meeting. Actually, it's March 19th minutes, so.
I do, this is Cheryl. I moved that we approved the minutes without changes from March 19th. At least I have none.
All anybody have any suggested changes? If not, we'll do the roll call. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Hey, I think this, everybody, I will ask as a courtesy that people because I don't know who can see who for Josh's sanity. If you'll identify yourself when you speak, all right?
Sure.
Okay, so we are therefore on to reports by the superintendent, assistant superintendent. And yes, this is your time to fly, Lynn.
Well, the continuity of learning plan was accepted today. I believe Chris has uploaded it on the website. There's a lot of information on that as to how we're going to finish these last seven weeks of the school year. There's also a letter, a kind of abbreviated plan for families to be able to read and understand what the impact to them is going to be. Those are on the website. I know Chris has been in meeting after meeting with the with the Secretary of Education and other superintendents. He might be able to fill you in. He sent me some notes on the CARES Act, which I think he can fill you in, Jack, but it's not that much different from what you have. In the middle of all of this, we're planning next year's grants, which is I have a webinar every day for I have one every day this week and next week. So we're working on those, just understanding what the requirements are. And I'm getting ready to put in an amendment into our current grant. And I'm going to ask for some more. We hope that we get them, but I think every district in the state is going to be asking for more Chromebooks at this point, but what we've done is borrow Chromebooks from one school to share with another school to make sure everybody gets one. And of course, the concern is that they either won't come back or they they will come back, but they'll need some repairs. You know, they may not be in the same exact condition that when we let them out. So we want to be able to replenish those. This week is vacation week. All these students are not learning this week. It is a break. It's a much needed break for the teachers. Of course, they've been asked to do an amazing amount of work in an amazingly short amount of time, and they've done beautifully. And so hopefully, people are just catching their breath right now before we move on to the end of the year. So.
All right, I know that I've, you know, sent you and Chris questions almost daily. I try to summarize those in that little note that I put into chat to the extent that you think it's useful to to touch on any of those specifically. Either you, Chris, you or Chris will wish to, that'd be probably nice. It'll save people some questions. And I would, by the way, I would certainly encourage everyone because of the bizarre nature of this format. If you have questions from the from the agenda item, it'll be a lot more efficient for people if we do put them in writing, I think, and fire them off. I'm trying to set a good example.
If we have questions like that, Jack, you want us to just put them in the chat right now?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if you have them, if you don't have them, I don't want people to go into composition mode. But if you had stuff ahead of time, I think it's useful to get things up. It'll serve as a guide for Lynn and Chris. I was going to do it in advance to this meeting and simply had two other meetings back to back in front of it. So never get a chance.
Jack, just let me know when you're ready between Lynn and I, we can start answering some of these questions that I've been posting.
Why don't you do that? And that's will give a chance for Melissa and Cheryl and Lynn, if they've got others to lay them out. If you don't have access to writing stuff down, then you just have to pipe up, I guess.
So I'll start with the first one. This is Chris Pratt, Superintendent of Schools. Good evening, everybody. So the first is what does what does that look like going forward? What does continuity of education and learning look like going forward? Well, it's 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 pretty involved, actually, in regards to what we're talking about for the next seven weeks. And it's so involved, I believe, the continuity of learning plan that we submitted to the state, and it was accepted today around three o'clock. It's about 40 pages long, so it's very in depth. And so to go into that, it's pretty much what it looks like is pretty much what we've been doing since we've been put on this hiatus from being in the buildings. And nothing really changes all too much for families, students and parents. All what you're seeing on the website and what I sent out in an email the other day is pretty much what we're doing and what it looks like in writing. So I would encourage everybody to take a look at what was sent and what is on the WNSU website as continuity of learning plan is and has been accepted by the state. And that'll be the plan that we will continue to use unless we hear otherwise from the governor. Next up is how are paraprofessionals used in this environment? Currently, right now, it's sporadic, but paraprofessionals, just like teachers and administrators, everyone's doing their part. You have it varies across the the table in regards to what paras are doing. You have some that are spending time calling calling families and checking in with with students. Others are assisting with delivering meals. So it 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 looks the same, but in a lot of ways, there's a lot of people stepping up and assisting with what we're what we're doing. We do have a lot of people across the board, just not paraprofessionals, but teachers and et cetera, that have been affected by this, especially if they're parents. They now have the responsibility of, you know, be at home and in trying to, you know, keep up with the learning as well. And for those, so for some parent educators and teachers, they're not able to be as involved as they would have if schools in session. Or if it's for health issues that they themselves have encountered. So it does look very sporadic across the board, but you know, at this point, I think Lynn would agree. And so the principle is that everyone's pulling their weight to the best they can based on the situation we have. The, you know, I look at it as our objective as educators in the short term and the long term is to continue to provide an education that's equitable and it's meeting the needs of the students where we are, whether we're outside of the buildings or we're in the buildings. And that's going to be the objective moving forward on any level is that we have to be. We have to hope for the best and prepare for the worst, and that's what we're going to continue to do. So next question. How many hours a day are we dealing with instruction wise? Well, it all depends on the on the grade level. I think it's middle school and high school, and that's in part of the plan. If you go through and you look at that plan, it's probably like in the around a third of the way through is that each grade level is broken up a little different. Pre-K is about 30 minutes a day of instruction. I think it's K1 is about 45, and then it continues to go up from there. And so when you get to elementary grades and it doesn't exceed, I believe, two hours a day of instruction. And when you hit the middle school and high school, it's not to exceed a total of three hours of instruction. And I think it's important to also mention that this is not to replace what we were doing. This is the best we can do with the situation that we're currently in, knowing that we're not going to have six hours of learning each day. That wouldn't be fair to parents or students. And this is no means as to, you know, be a a fair trade off in regards to what we're looking at now. And then when eventually we do come back in the schools, you have to understand that we're going to have gaps in learning across the board, and we have to be ready to prepare for those. And that's what we intend to do. Special education support in this environment. Right now, because we are educating kids, we are still required to make sure we're meeting all IEPs in supporting students on IEPs and 504s. And so, yes, we, this does not relinquish us from our responsibilities for providing that support for kids on IEPs and 504s. We are still doing that. CARES funding, Title I food service costs. So let me just talk a little bit about that right there. So once a week, we have a meeting with Secretary French. And so as it stands right now, the state's actually working with the feds on what the reimbursement looks like from how much and how it is going to be distributed in regards to the CARES Act. So the CARES Act revenues for special education costs. What their suggestion is that when we do get this money, and I can tell you in a little bit how much the state's getting and how much the CARES Act is funded for, is that they're they're urging and leaning towards the direction that we should be use this money that we get from CARES, from the feds, to really kind of assist in our special education costs in case the reimbursement doesn't cover it all we get from the state. So that was, you know, that was one thought that we talked a little bit about today with the Secretary of Education. Total the CARES Act from the Fed standpoint is a $13 billion act, and Vermont, it will get $31 million of that. And we're looking by the end of the month that they'll be giving us guidance on how this money is going to be used and distributed. As it is right now, the word is is that it'll probably be distributed very similar to how the consolidated federal funds are distributed. And SUs would get it based on 80% of what their consolidated federal grant funds are. That's what you'd be looking at for local CARE Act money. The governor is also going to be getting like $3 million out of a 30 out of a $3 billion federal grant. Vermont will be getting getting 3 million of that. And that goes directly to the governor for education spending. And the governor right now, he will have the the leeway in regards to how and how he spends it and who gets it in regards to the Vermont Education Fund. So he has that discretion. So the AOE with the CARES Act money, the AOE can retain 10% of the CARES money to be used in the fall. And that was discussed today as well. So that's the the most recent updates that we have on the on the CARES Act as of today or two o'clock. Next year and this summer. It's too far down the road to anticipate, you know, what the end of the year is going to look like. We do have seven weeks left. There, there is thought that there, there may be, all depending on who you talk to and what medical people you listen to, is that there is a slight possibility that, you know, we could be back for the last two weeks of school. That's there's a possibility there. But like I said, you know, we have to wait and see what happens. And the and so in addition to that, if if whether we are or not, there is the belief that there will be another surge in the fall in regards to the COVID. So whether we're back the last two weeks or not, with that surge, I'm sure that would take us back out of the buildings again. So to really speculate what the end of the year would look like, the summer or even the fall, it's just changing too quickly, and I really couldn't give you an answer on that. And I don't think many people could. We just have to, like I said, hope for the best and prepare for the worst and make sure that we're able to provide students with high quality education. Let's see, planning for the rest of the year.
Can I ask a summer question? When do we usually announce if we're back to business as usual? When do we usually announce summer programs? That's pretty soon, right? We were to have them or we?
I mean, I don't think there's any.
I mean, usually, not this year.
Usually around now, we're, you know, we're starting to look at summer programs and stuff like that. But as you know, with everything going on, not know, you know, knowing that we are in a, you know, in a situation where it's unprecedented. And we just don't know at this point, because if we have to go in and cut money from budgets and we're not looking at RIFs, contracts have already been sent out to teachers because we have the deadline of yesterday that we had to get contracts out. So you're really looking at programs above and beyond if we're looking at making further cuts to a budget or adjusting a budget. So at this point, we really can't say what we're going to have programs until some of those decisions are made. Mandatory attendance is an issue. That's a question on here. We're required, and you can read it in the plan, that we're required to take attendance. We're taking attendance just like we would if we were in school. It's being documented and put into power school because in order to get our funding, we have to prove that we have at least 50% of our students attending school. And that we're fortunate enough that the administrators have worked very hard with their teachers. If we have students who are absent from the morning meetings or the classes, there's a follow up phone call to touch, reach out and touch bases with that family. But we are required to take attendance. And there is K through 12, this follow up with families if students, you know, are not attending classes. So like I said, there's more of that in the plan that you can you can read about.
I want to be specific on that one, that part of the issue that I was asked about had to do with kids that would be leaving the sixth grade and going on to middle school somewhere. And the question is, will they be in fact ready? Just ask the red shirting question. It's kind of a version of that. Are we, do we know what we're going to be able to certify to incoming middle schools? What we're going to be giving them in the way of prepared or not very prepared seventh graders?
Yeah, I mean, what we had to identify certain benchmarks and standards in our plan that we were going to address through this end of the year and how we're going to measure those. So when students go on to the next grade, that we report out to the state and we're we're showing that there is growth. But we have to anticipate there is going to be some lost ground for student learning when we go back in the fall or the end of the school year. And that's that's a real concern that all of us as educators are looking, you know, if we're looking at one area down the road and not trying to look too far down, that's one area that we're concerned about because if we start, you know, reducing other positions outside of the the teaching staff, we need to make sure that we have a system in place when they come back that we can do all the quality control that we need to make sure that, you know, these students are going to be caught up and we're meeting their needs. And and that's not going into the social and emotional issues that we might tackle from students coming back into the school from being out for so long. You know, so that's one of the concerns that, you know, thinking far ahead that we are concerned about in general as an education staff. Continuity of education, advancement, mastery and testing. Yeah, we are required to, like I said, through competency based instruction and tests, like I just talked about, we are required to measure growth and see how they're how they're growing. So that is part of the plan as well. Further guidance about budget and elections from Secretary of State. Right now, there's no, there's no further guidance. On May 8th, the governor will revisit what the end of the year may look like, whether we're going to stay in closure or reopen up. So that's next. I think that's the next big hurdle that we have to get over is look. And of course, you all know this is going to be, I think, a lot of it guided by the federal level and pushed down to the the local level. So we just have to wait on that in regards to what that's going to look like. And that date is May 8th.
All right.
Let me just see.
Get called back on May 9th for a quick meeting. If we have a date, we can announce a whatever it is we're going to do, an election, a meeting or something. I think we really do. I don't want us to run over into July again because I think people will kill us if we do that a second time.
Yeah, so the last question I see on here is from Jess, it says, do we have any teachers that already have online teaching endorsements or license? I know we do. I don't know how many, but we do have some of them who already teach online classes to they, you know, at the high school level, the middle school and elementary level? No, but I mean, if we have any teachers, they're at the high school, high school level. And that's another area that superintendents have been talking about because a lot goes into and you need, you know, in online learning, any teacher who does it, there's training involved, there's certification involved. So what we've seen is that now we're throwing everyone into that same kind of basket of now everyone needs to do online teaching. And we're trying to do the best we can doing it without having the proper professional development and the certification that's needed to do online teaching. So it'll be interesting to see, you know, if we stay in this for a longer term. I know for us as an SU, this is something that we were going to look about, look at and start kind of peeling away the layers to see what we can do for professional development around online teaching. And that's something that, you know, we would start as early as this summer for professional development. So it is something that is on our radar in regards to it. It's something we realize that we've been thrown into this, but we we do want to have a plan, long term plan to get people the professional development they need to be successful at online teaching because it is extremely difficult and especially if you do not have any training in it. So that's where we are on that. I think I answered all the questions. I don't know, again, defer to Lynn now and see if she wants to add to any of that.
When I I'm looking at some, so if there are children who are left behind or who do show gaps, we have a really strong intervention group. Our Title I people are excellent and they're really well trained for interventions. We do have systems in place to work with students and small groups of students who may have lost more ground than not. But remember, even though we are not able to replicate a whole six hour day, which includes an hour of recess and lunch and moving here and moving there, these students are getting. We've, we've looked at the anchor state, the anchor standards from the Common Core, and we've chosen the most pertinent ones per grade that we're focusing on. And the the students are still getting their remedial education or their interventions. And the beauty is that they're getting them. Most of them are getting them individually. So for instance, a teacher has a classroom, they meet in the morning for 15, 20 minutes for morning meeting. They have a Google Classroom set up on the different things they're working on. But then the teacher will call that family or video chat with that family. And the student will, if they're in the younger grades, they'll read aloud to the teacher. They'll read, they'll also read aloud to the interventionist. If they're having literacy intervention, we're still following our level literacy intervention program. Also, the math program, they're getting the math interventions. If if they're showing a need now, they're getting those interventions. Special education are getting those interventions that are or those modifications to their curriculum that are already in the IEPs. So we are still, you know, meeting and talking and making plans for students that we know traditionally have struggled and to help them not fall that far behind. Students that need to be extended, teachers, they pretty much know. They may choose a different book to study from the other kids, but they do know how to extend that learning there. And a lot of this is already written in the continuity of learning plan. So all of those, all that information is in there. But I do, I, yeah, we'll probably definitely have a lack of skills. But the kind of teaching that's going on now is so focused. It's so, it's so to the point of what, you know, what is the most important thing that these kids need to to know, to understand and do? And I'm, I'm not as pessimistic about what the outcomes will be. These teachers know what these kids need. They know the curriculum and they're able to put together a learning environment where these really important skills, the writing, the reading, the math, you know, foundations, where those are really being taught and they're being monitored and assessed. In the high school, I can tell you that the curriculum is pretty much the same as it would be if they were face to face in classrooms. But again, you have older kids, they're more self directed, they're more motivated. The middle school is similar to that. In the elementary, I think the teachers are working really hard and focusing. And that kind of focused teaching, I think, will have, will have a strong impact on how the kids will be able to be prepared for next year.
I, I, I agree, Lynn, I think we're, we're, I have been so impressed with teachers, administrators, everybody in regards to. What we've accomplished in such a short time to make sure that these kids are getting their education, you know. The, the amount of technology we're using, we're feeding all these kids, I mean. Um the community and the board and everyone should be so proud of the work that the teachers, administrators, everyone, custodians, bus drivers. Everyone is doing across the board in such a short time, it amazes me that we put to get, that. We are where we are right now, um and we've just been into it for two weeks. And it, once you get into reading that continuity of a learning plan that's on the website and was sent out. You know. You'll, you'll understand what I'm talking about in regards to the level of planning that um we all did, and it was a, a group effort. From, like I said, custodians all the way up to um teachers and everybody, it's been fantastic and I can't praise. Everyone in the SU enough for everything they've done and it's only been two and a half weeks, so when you look at that plan. It'll kind of put it into perspective a little bit.
Want to ask, go around Robin, uh cause Lynn and Melissa. And Cheryl, it wasn't patiently, I want to make sure each of them have had a chance to. Uh ask any questions they might have, uh Lynn, I'm going to start with you because you're higher up on my screen. Uh it, uh, do you have any questions here at this point or?
I'm sure it's already been uh worked on, but there are, do all of the kids have access to internet? How, was that able to be accomplished?
Um we do have a small amount who, um a very small amount in some of the schools, I don't think that's the case in. Um Athens, Grafton and Westminster, the principals can tell me if I'm right, but I believe the last time um we found that out that we don't. We have very little or none in that area and for, in general, for the kids who do, we continue to provide them, you know, packets and um. We, the tech, the tech committee that we, that we have is constantly looking into tapping into. Um different opportunities out there, whether it's free or. Uh funded for broadband and stuff, so we keep that on our radar, but I think for um this district, you guys are in pretty good shape in regards to having access to the technology. And I'm sure the principals will speak about that during their report.
Great, thank you.
Anything? Melissa, I don't know if you can hear me. We've lost her audio. Melissa, I'll come back to you, Cheryl, how about you?
Well, if I, if I could, I'm not sure this is the right time for it, but I've um, as Jack knows and others, I, I, I've actually read the whole CARES Act and. Spent a lot of time with various other documents today and Chris wanted to comment she made earlier in your report, which I thought was really helpful. Had to do with possibly funding from uh the, the thirty one million that will be coming to Vermont for elementary and secondary ed. Maybe many of those funds will go to special ed, that's really the first I've heard about that, I wonder if you could. Outflow find that, because as I look at what the allowable uses of the funds are, um that isn't what I was seeing front and center, so could you say a little more, please?
Yeah, no, they're not saying that we have to use it for anything, that the discretion on how we use it is up to um, you know. The, at the local level. What they're saying is that at this point, what they're seeing in um education, in special ed and everything is that. That might be the wisest thing to do is um when you get that money. Put it aside for the excessive special education costs that we might be seeing. Um because we do have until September of twenty twenty.
Twenty one.
Twenty one, that money, so, no, they weren't saying we have to use it that way, they're just based on what they're seeing at the state level in regards to. Um, you know, because we're looking at a ninety million dollar um deficit in education spending. And a lot of it is going to be tied to special ed, that might be the best way to um use those. Those funds is towards special education.
And that's in part be- because you're, you're, you're anticipating a loss of some skills and you're anticipating some. Maybe social emotional problems, it'll make it harder for kids to focus, harder for kids to do well, which might then qualify them for special ed, it might be. Increasing the number of children who need those services, I'm trying to understand the rationale.
The rationale is, yeah, exactly that, we're going to be having a lot of kids coming back. Um currently in IEPs and prob- possibly um some kids who have. Fell far enough behind that they might be identified for five or four IEP or something like that. Um so they're just anticipating that right now, the ninety million dollar deficit in spending. And we can't use the CARES Act as, the state can't use the CARES money as a revenue. Um so there, you know, it's, it's pretty doom and gloom in regards to what we're looking at in regards to. The deficit in education spending and so they're saying that, yeah, you can use it however you want, but based on what we're finding out right now, you may want to, you know. Look at. What's happening in special ed, because that's probably where we're going to take a huge hit, not knowing what you're going to get reimbursed for in special ed, especially when you're dealing with so many socially emotional. Um issues that might come up, new kids being identified and kids who may have lost ground while they were out. Combination of everything.
We, let me.
Sure, okay, well, Jack, let me just build on that for a second, because I'm looking at the list of allowable uses of the funds. From uh from the CARES Act and it's any activity authorized by the Elementary and Secondary Ed Act. But it goes on with, you know, allowing, providing principals with the resources they need to address the need that their individual schools, there's a whole. List here, uh oh, including providing mental health services. Um but also a bullet around planning and implementing activities related to summer learning, supplemental after school programs. Um online earning during the, online learning during the summer perhaps, it, so it's a broad list and I, I'm just noting, it's not that. That we can, or you or any of us at the local level can use the money for anything, it's within these boundaries. But what you're highlighting with this dramatic concern about a budgetary shortfall is we have to, you're trying to be. Uh and the guidance you're getting is to look at that as a, as a special area where one may have need. Um I, I appreciate your background, your additional background on that, but, you know, I, I, Jack, you had sent me this also, I looked at the webinar. Um from the fiscal office folks and um and, and that was such a serious. Picture played of our potential budgetary challenges and it could be even worse than was described.
Uh let, let me just speak briefly to that, because I want, then I want to let just, Melissa have a moment here. And that is, that the real, the problem that. We identified early on and the one that I talked to our congressional folks about. Was that we have not been relieved of the, at least not in full, of the documentation requirements that we have for special education staff. And in this environment, that's a real problem because that documentation is going to be almost impossible to put together. So in some ways, the money that you're seeing being given to um to individual districts. Is A inadequate and B is pretty closely. Uh parallel to um to monies that we are at risk of losing simply because we can't document. Uh sped activities, the same level of precision that we did a month ago, and so there's a real. I think it's, it's wise fiscally to know and be aware of that and have that money around in case that's what it's. Ends up being needed for, because we're still paying all those people and we're going to need to get the money from somewhere. So, there you go, uh I'm going to go back, i- if, Melissa, is your uh, is your connection any better? You want to give it a try? Hi, can you hear us?
I see in the chat there, Jack, that Melissa said she didn't have any questions, she's not sure why, no one can hear her.
Sorry about that, Melissa. Um, this is going to be like typing text from the nineteen fifties. Alright, uh moving on to the next item, let's see, where are we, we have done the reports of. You, there's an item here, Chris says, uh office report, district updates, you, anything further on that? I think you've got a couple items you want to talk to.
I think most of it was covered in what we just spoke about, so.
Alright.
Have anything to add to it at this point, unless Linda.
Sounds good. Um, then we're on to um. Uh leadership staffing plans, I believe, so we want to touch on that now, I think would be the right time, am I?
Do we have principals reporting out tonight?
We do, do you want to do that ahead of this?
Uh yes, I, I, I think that I, I would, I would like to see that, I mean.
Alright. Uh without objection, I'd like to, I'm going to move the uh. To B and C, um or whatever it is, uh ahead and we'll, we'll begin with that. Uh uh flip a coin, uh Liz, you're on the top of my screen, so you want to go first?
Sure, hello, um so for my principal report, we've been in school dismissal as we've been talking about. Um our staff has been connecting with students and families, getting people used to the online form, format. We actually have all of our families having online access at this point. Um Chromebooks and iPads will be distributed this coming Monday, April twentieth, so any student who'd like a device. To use during the dismissal is able to pick one up on the morning of Monday, April twentieth. Teachers will also be sending home additional supplies to accompany the online assignments this Monday as well. Um we've just been a meeting as staff, meeting in smaller committees. To align our plans to that of the continuity of learning plan designed by the SU. As was touched on earlier, um we have a virtual morning meeting every day where students are K one. Students are expected to have an hour of academic time a day. To second and third graders, it's ninety minutes and four through six is a hundred and twenty minutes. Um our staff is meeting weekly, we're also meeting in smaller teams just to make sure that all of our students, families. And teachers are really feeling supported during this time, we are so fortunate that. Steph has been really amazing in changing and adapting to the current situation and our families have also been really amazing. In meeting their students where they are, connecting with schools and our teachers are walking um families through. How to access the Google Classroom, how to log on to certain things, answering questions, and so at this point. Um because we've been doing this for two and a half weeks or so, just this muddiness of what's going on, we're kind of excited for the twentieth. For everyone to have a device and to kind of set a reset, so that will be moving forward with the same plan as everyone else in the SU. Are there any questions?
Folks. Um I, I can't see the people nodding their heads, if I can't see their videos, you'll have to just say no. I'm guessing you're all set then, Doug, you're up next.
I think Liz said it great, um it's pretty very similar to what's happening at Westminster, again, same thing, getting ready for April twentieth, where we'll have a computer. Uh pickup day, um iPads for kindergarten, Chromebooks for first through six. Again, same thing, teachers preparing packets uh to go with those, those uh Chromebooks. We have about four families that have um internet issues, I'll say, like in, those are unique to individual families, so some have no access or we. And some are, they only have access at certain houses depending on the day of the week kind of a thing, so. Um, you know, teachers have just been, uh I think all staff really, paras, special educators who've been reaching out, connecting with families have. Kind of just taken, it's such a unique circumstance and they're treating each circumstance as a unique circumstance and troubleshooting it as they go. Um which has been great, so it's like all hands on deck trying to, if there's a problem, they're just working away, they're working the problem, basically. Um so we have a couple of those, but again, kind of working, working with the families, working to find out what happens, whether that's. Connected with them Saturday morning, because that's when families are not at work and can like be there to help their kid with the work, it's a, it's a whole new era. Um our school, we'd kind of been like prepping to go online for a couple of weeks, so some teachers. Where we were all in different phases when we left before spring break, um some already had class meetings up and going uh on uh Google meets or. On Zoom uh every morning doing a, a morning meeting where they can put visualize on kids. Um but most of them by the end of uh last Friday had had. Um morning meetings and those seem to be getting more successful from the ones that I was popping in, it's a steep learning curve, trying to, like what works in real life morning meeting. And what works in a Zoom meeting for uh six year olds um can be a little bit different. Um so anyway, so it's, you know, trying to look at it as an adventure and, and uh hoping to bring the kids along with us on that. Um again, April twentieth is sort of our, our kickoff day for the official next uh phase um of dismissal. Um just another kind of silly news, we, I guess there is a um, a parade is being planned. Um after we learned uh superintendent Pratt sent out a note saying that uh permits were not needed. Um that excited some of my staff, um so they're trying to plan a parade for next Friday. Um if you've been on Facebook, you can see that's, it's kind of a thing, it's like, I don't know, it's like, it's a thing. Um so we're doing ours next Friday, I think it's going to be at five, but I'll be posting that if you want to stand out in the yard, we'll wave at you as we drive by in our cars. Um it's a thing, uh anyways, and that we do have, uh we also launched a, a virtual Viking Voyage um. Last Friday through Flipgrid, um just another way to kind of connect. I think families and teachers were completely saturated with zooming and connecting and talking by last Friday, so. Um I'm really hoping that staff have been able to take this uh spring break as a true spring break, I know it sounds weird if you're not in the business or haven't been trying to do this, but. It's been exhausting uh and trying and as a parent and as an educator at the same time, I needed it to, uh just to. Uh kind of regroup, so yeah, that's uh, that's about where we're at, the custodians have been in hard at work cleaning, they've done a deep clean of everything, cleaning. Like literally from floor to ceiling, um so that's, that's been great and um continue trying to. Uh just maintain after people kind of come through, we've pretty much locked the building down. Um people really aren't coming in now because there's not as much of a need, so that's, that's our status.
Round Robin, anyone with questions at this point? I guess you're off the hook. No, Cheryl, did you have a question, I'm sorry?
No, no, I'm filled with both reports, thank you Liz, thank you Doug.
Okay, very good, um we now should talk about the uh staffing plans, I believe is uh on. Is here, so let's talk to that and uh I put a couple of notes up for the benefit of. Uh Chris and Lynn as we go through this, but uh they don't need to pay attention to them, they're just things that they may want as points, so uh you're up. Who's talking about uh the staffing issues for next year?
Well, contracts went out today, so in regards to professional staff, teachers and stuff. There, you know, for academics, um there are no reductions in staff. Um we do need to take a further look at um support staff and some other, you know, areas. Um between now and the end of the year, um so um we'll be doing that. Um that's all I'm going to, you know, say at this point about that because um it really is too early to tell. Um in regards to what we're looking at, like I said at the beginning of the meeting. You know, in two weeks, seven weeks, summer or fall, so we have to go very slow in regards to. Any changes that we're making in staffing and so.
I, I, I think this really had more to do with um. I, and, and we may have talked about this and I've just too glazed over from too many meetings to remember, but uh did we? Talk about the uh staffing in terms of next year's leadership, uh the, the building level?
Well, yes, so as, so as a superintendent, I, you know, I am, I, it's in, within my authority as superintendent that I am. Um and I've spoken to Liz about this, is be transferring her um to Westminster School as, as principal. And so um, you know, she's agreed to that, what I would recommend to the board is that. Um and so, you know, like I said, Liz and I have spoken about this a few months ago, is that she remain principal at the Grafton School. Um there's, if there's an option there with um hiring a part time dean or assistant principal. Um to work out of the office there. Um but ultimately, you know, how the board wants to move forward in regards to um. Full time, part time, whatever it looks like at the Athens Grafton, that's totally up to you. That's totally up to you and the board to make that decision. It's my decision to, um, you know, go forth and offer you candidates once you make a decision on what to do. I have, we, we have tentatively, um, just done a change of placement for Liz to be the principal of Westminster School.
Are you looking for a vote from our board on this matter either to approve a change of staffing or anything else? It sounds like you might be, but I wasn't clear. And I don't think I ever asked the question quite this directly in our prep meetings. So,
At, at, at this point, um, you know, I'll, you know, a change of placement for, for Liz because it is within the same district. Just so it's not an approval on that level. What the board does need to, um, give me guidance on and Lynn guidance on is how to move forward with the open position that's left in Athens and Grafton. And like I said, the only, what I offer out there is that you leave Liz as principal at, for both schools and, um, fill that position over there, whether it's part-time or full-time with another administrator.
All right. I'm going to, uh, in a minute, I'm going to go on mute, but I'm going to entertain a, because I got noise in the background. But I'm going to entertain a motion, uh, to change the staffing to an assistant principal at the Grafton School, reporting to the principal of the two schools. And I'm looking for somebody that isn't me to make that motion so we can get it on the floor. Am I hearing anybody willing to do that?
Lynn, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lynn. I'm going to put this on mute just because the TV or something is on in the background, but I'm going to be listening. Hold on just a second. So if, uh, anybody'd like to talk to this or ask questions, just turn off your mic.
Well, this is Cheryl. I think I've got a, a question about it. I understand, Chris, that you, you've made it clear that I'm within your authority to make this change of placement. And, um, we certainly have no question about Liz's being qualified to be in this role. But what you've said though is that is an administrative change within your authority. You're asking for guidance about a position at the Athens Grafton School. We have in our budget, two principals positions funded. And so this discussion now, I'm not sure what the assistant principal would be. I'm not sure actually what's in Jack's, what, what the entire Jack's motion is at this time. Uh, so I'd like, I'd welcome more commentary about that.
I guess this is my cue. Uh, it just seemed to me that, uh, while staffing is of the purview of the, staffing a given position is, is in the purview of our administration. We've often, uh, spoken about changes in the type of staffing we have. And I've, have at least in the past given pro forma approval, say if we were hiring a, a new guidance person or hiring, an additional support person for a given class. This felt like the same sort of thing to me. Uh, and that's why I thought it would be appropriate to bring it to the board for comment and possibly approval. If people don't feel that's necessary, I'll defer to the, I'll defer to the collective wisdom.
Jack, can I just add a few things? One of the things that, um, that makes this kind of, uh, having Liz oversee both schools is because she has developed such a, a strong connection with the, uh, Grafton community, the Athens Grafton community and the school and the parents and the teachers. She's guided them through a change of curriculum and she's, she's really knowledgeable about, um, where the curriculum needs to go and how to keep it sustained. So it was implemented, but we need to sustain it and monitor it. Remembering there's, uh, right now, there's only 50 students in, in the Grafton School. Um, it's, it's not a large school and, um, the idea of having an assistant or a part-time person there. When she goes to, if she goes to Grafton, the assistant could be at Westminster. So that both schools would have someone pretty much, you know, all the time, unless there was a, a part-time person that would be spending their time in Grafton part-time. But, um, this is, this is where we were thinking about, um, Liz's leadership. So literally she's adding on with the Westminster School, two or three more classes, but using kind of the same leadership with the Grafton School as she has, what, as what she will do with the Westminster School.
I, I don't think, uh, Liz's leadership is in debate here. The, it was really more, and there you go, Liz. The, the, uh, it was more a question of whether or not the, we needed for technical reasons to approve, uh, the changing in staff uh, in, in the staffing structure, uh, at the, uh, Grafton Elementary School. And I confess to you, I don't really know your thoughts on that. I know we've done that at the high school, but this is a little bit different.
Let me just, let me just say, I think what, what the administration is looking at at this point from the board is a decision on a part-time versus full-time, um, assistant or versus another principal. We're just looking, I'm just looking for direction. So Lynn and I can move forward and fill in the position however the board seems they would like it filled. That way we can go out and find candidates and bring them back to you.
I'm, I'm sensitive to the fact that it's April and you need to get going on this. So that's why, uh, let me, let me walk around, walk again. Uh, I'll start with Jessica because you're higher up on my screen. I have no other reason for this. Uh, Jessica, any thoughts?
I do. And the timing on this is so unfortunate, um, with everything that's going on. Honestly, at the local and the SU level, I would like to propose a hiring freeze until this is all sorted out. And we see what the FY21 budget's going to be like, or the money we actually receive that we already based our budget on. What is the regulatory requirement for administration at the Grafton School on site?
You mean, what's the ratio between administrators versus students?
Well, what, are we required to have a principal on site for X number of hours a week? Or what is the standard that we have to meet?
I don't think so. I don't, I don't think you're required to have an adminis-, you know, someone with an administrative certification at that. I mean, it all depends what the board wants it to look like. If you're looking at someone who would be doing observations, then yeah, we need someone with a, um, administrative certification. You could go with a lead teacher as well. That, um, but a lot of times I find with the lead teacher model is that, um, their classroom instruction gets compromised if something ever comes up.
Yeah, um, like,
You don't have to have anyone on site. Let, you know, Liz would, you know, Liz would, you know, would, you know, if you don't fill the position, it's going to, um, and it's something I, we talked to Liz further about is that she'd have to split her time between the two. But under the circumstances, I understand where you're coming from, Jessica, in regards to a freeze, but, um, based on what you guys decide tonight, you know, Lynn and I would continue a conversation with Liz.
Uh, Lynn, you're up next because you're where you are on my screen.
Okay. I am a little uncomfortable not having somebody on site. You know, if there were an issue that needed to be cared for. So I would like to at least have a part-time person there that is under Liz. Because I can't imagine that Liz would be able to leave Westminster and come to Athens too many hours a week. And like Chris mentioned, the lead teacher, I don't like that idea either because it would compromise that teacher's classroom. So I'm not quite sure how many hours we would need, but I'd like to see, you know, multiple days of supervision at the Grafton School in some way.
Melissa, we're going to try you again. Though I think you're frozen on the screen, so I don't know what that means. Uh, I'm going to encourage Melissa, if you can to, to grab a phone and try to call in because I do really want to hear from you if it's possible. Cheryl, you're up next while we figure out the technical stuff for Melissa.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm, I'm certainly sorting, uh, a variety of ideas here. Um, and you know, I echoed Jessa and talking about the unfortunate timing of all of this. You know, I'm well aware that we don't have a budget that's been approved by the voters of the three towns. That that budget did still include two full-time principals. Having said that, we're going to be seeing extraordinary stresses and strains on both the community, the voters, and on our budget, period. I think that a discussion of the budget by the townspeople is likely to lead to proposals to reduce, um, what we are taking to them at this point in time, what we approved long before, um, all these circumstances arose. So I'm just trying to weigh, and I, I, I don't know if we have to do it tonight, although I hear the timeliness of, of guidance for, for Chris and Lynn, if they were to advertise for an assistant principal position. I think I'd like a better understanding of what that would involve. If it's not a full-time person, but it's not a lead teacher because you don't want to compromise the quality of what the children get in the classroom environment. What does that look like? I mean, what's a part-time assistant principal do? How much time is he or she there? What would be, and would they do any teaching? Could you just say a little more about that, please?
I think a part-time administrator would look, um, mostly to be there for emergency situations, um, to, uh, deal with, um, possible behavioral problems, um, follow up with parents if they have questions, answer emails. And, um, if it's a sort of, you know, and solve, someone who can be their support for, to answer curriculum questions as well. Um, so I think there's, there's plenty enough for them to do at a part-time position. I would say, you know, three days a week, um, or, you know, half a day every day, you know, how it can look can vary. But, um, they'd be, you know, taking over the role as what Liz does when she is there now, but they, if we able to find someone who's a certified administrator, they would just take on the roles, you know, as acting principal when Liz is not there. And so that could look anywhere from, um, I would say we'd want this person to do some, to do, um, ob-, observations, evaluations. We'd want them to, you know, be in, um, communication with parents, emergency situations, um, plans. So that's how I envision that looking. Um, could they teach classes? I would say probably not because that, you know, would, um, involve that, like, if you had a lead teacher, you'd be experiencing some of the same kind of compromise when it comes to, uh, student learning.
I spoke, you know, uh, we, we've talked about how we either, how, how many ways we may use our advisory folks. And one of the folks I reached out to on this question admittedly before all hell broke loose was, uh, John Turner, who is an education fellow I respect. And he also, because he buttoned hold me unprompted on the street before. And that was that he thought it was extremely difficult to ask, uh, a principal to spend half an hour commuting back and forth between buildings. And there really needed to be somebody that, uh, Liz could rely on to handle things, uh, when she's engaged in the other building. And I think that that's, that has merit. Uh, I, again, I, I maybe in this new age we're in, uh, we saw these things with Zoom calls. I have no idea. But I think that, uh, physical presence of somebody that teachers can go to is important. And if we go from a two principals model to a principal and either a lead or a, an assistant part-time principal, we are making a, uh, a multi-thousands of dollars worth of cuts there already. And, uh, it's something that if people wish to approve a cut to the budget to accommodate that, that is one of a couple of things we could very well do. But, you know, I always say that you can make a 2% cut to any budget without messing it up. If you try to cut more than 5%, you're essentially restructuring from the ground up. And I don't think this is any different. I don't know. We do have a motion on the floor. Do people, would we, would you all rather I, I take that, uh, motion off the floor and just go with this verbal guidance? I, I don't know. It's not feeling sufficient to me, but I'll, um, I'll defer to you all and to Chris.
Uh, Jack, I don't, this is Cheryl. I don't know if you can see that Melissa has written something in the chat, in the chat.
Okay, uh, I'm going to, oh, there we go. I'm not, uh, I'll read what she has written just for the record. I'm not terribly fond of a part-time position. I don't see leadership as a part-time position. In the absence of a full-time position, I'm concerned about someone stepping into a position in a rogue way, which could compromise the, uh, school culture. I think that's a very good point. Justice asked if there are qualified principals often looking for part-time, uh, work and Doug mentioned, um, uh, retired principals. So those are points that have been offered and are sort of offline round, uh, round table here. Um, yes.
Um, I, there's also, um, another, other options. We, we do have, um, uh, certain professionals who are qualified as, uh, administrators, but are serving in another capacity and they could conceivably be a part-time principal or assistant principal, and then a part-time other kind of administrator for the district, but be in the building during the day. So we do have other people in other departments that are serving in jobs that don't include teaching, but are serving in, in other administrative jobs and they're certified to be principals, but they haven't been a principal yet. And starting as a part-time assistant principal, uh, while they're still working full-time in another capacity, another part-time capacity, putting the two jobs together, uh, would be another option for us. And we do have a couple of candidates that fit that. Also too, a full-time assistant principal would be fine as well. Uh, it, it probably wouldn't, you know, it probably wouldn't be the amount of savings. But if we, if the SU could have someone in there, an administrator, a, a, a part-time assistant principal, working side by side with Liz and then doing, being in the building, but doing another job in the afternoon, some other kind of administrative paperwork job, perhaps special ed or something. Uh, there's another option. So we do have options. It's, it's not that we pull somebody out from the outside that would go rogue, that they would be part of our team and part of our vision and, uh, definitely would be here in the board meetings with you folks every two weeks as well.
Uh, Jessica and then Lynn.
Um, Liz, nobody's asked you yet. Do you think principal of the Grafton School is something that can be done part-time? Because you were here like 10 hours a day, every day. And do you think somebody can step in and do that two or three days a week?
Well, I think it wouldn't maybe not be days, but they would be here every day, but a portion of the day. That's how I'm thinking of it. And I'm thinking the, where I was able, where our staff and I were able to go the past two years, I don't want to lose that momentum. So I think it's important that I am connected with the school to some extent because I feel like we have some really great momentum going forward. And I would hate for that to fizzle with the whole new, um, full, you know, separate administrator. But I think if there were me working basically out of Westminster, but an assistant where I am in really close communication with, that is able to kind of pick up where we left off and move forward with my, with my help, that, um, I think it can be done. And I, I'm not seeing it as, oh, they're only in the building two days a week. I'm seeing it as like they're in the building every day, but for a portion of that day. That's how I thought of it, rather than, you know. That's how I thought of it, rather than nobody there. You're right. If somebody was only there one or two days a week, could the building really function? I don't, I would question that too, Jessa.
Lynn, you had a question, I believe.
Yes, Lynn, the piece you were talking about, we're using a person that's already in the system and doing two jobs part-time. You're saying that that person could do the other, the SU position, while staying in the building and being there in case they were needed, in case something came up and needed attention right then.
Right. So they'd be there five days a week, you know, dedicated half the day to Grafton, to being the assistant principal, but their office and their home base would be Grafton School. So yes, while they're working on out-of-district placements or some kind of special ed IEPs, they'd be doing that work from their office at Grafton. So, you know, maybe once or twice a month, he'd go to a meeting or something. But then the other time, you know, he'd be there for the most part. That was, that would be his or hers station. That would be their office. And yeah, and we think, you know, something like that could really work and save money for the special ed and for the, you know, the budget of the unified or the union district. And while still providing us with incredibly high quality. Because under Liz's guidance, these, both these schools will do really well. So, yeah, they would be there. That would be their home base.
I like that idea, the part that they would be there if an emergency arose. And they could then redirect themselves and take care of that emergency and then figure out the timing later. You know, I'd be very comfortable with that.
Great. I'm glad to hear that.
I'm also going to ask if any of our community members who have joined us today would like to have any thoughts on this. This is one of these things where I really do value the, our community advisory folks, because this is a good, the sort of thing I would, I normally would be walking around town asking people about. So if any of you have any thoughts, wave and we'll, and unmute and tell us what you think.
I think I'm the only community person. She's Charlie Hutchison.
Well, no, we've got, I've got some folks up here in Grafton.
Well, I'm from Westminster, but everything that
We'll forgive you for that.
Everything that Lynn and Liz have said about there being a good everyday presence in that school makes perfect sense to me. I think it would be important for that person to be very much under Liz's supervision or Liz's guidance, or whatever you want to call it. So I'm not from that district, but that makes sense to me.
Well, for now, you actually are in that district. We're all in this district together.
I'm not familiar with that district, but as a general principal, that makes total sense to me.
Okay. Do we need more guidance, or do we need an official, yeah, Jessa, yes?
I just have a question. So Lynn, you're talking about basically an employee of the SU who already has a principal's license, but is not working as a principal. And you could reposition them so their regular work site for their current job was here in an office in Grafton. And then for part of the day or as needed, could step into the principal role here. How do you budget for that and pay for that?
I can address that, you know, you know, we, like I said, we may have people in the district who have their, we do have people who have the administrative certification in the SU. And they're full-time right now. But if we had opposed it and they did show interest in that, then we have to take a look at to see how we would balance out. If they could do what they're doing half-time, which all depends who it is, because right now everyone's pretty straight out. And so, you know, the SU would continue to pay for their, or whatever that position is, you know, or it could be another teacher somewhere in the SU that has administrative certification. Wherever they're coming from would pay for that half of them. And then Athens and Grafton, this, this board here would pick up the other half. So, and their home base would be the Athens-Grafton office. You know, I don't know who would be interested, but I think it's worth of outside-of-the-box thinking like this and seeing, you know, if we have any homegrown right here in the SU to split the cost of the administrator, you know, at the Athens-Grafton.
Anything else by anybody? And do, I'm sensing, Chris and Lynn, that you would rather not have a vote and you'd rather see what we, you can come up with? Is that my take on where you're really at?
I, I think, you know, if we have the okay from the board to explore what the options are out there and know that you want us to explore all these different options that we've laid out and see and come, and have Lynn come back to the board and say, okay, this is what, this is what we currently have to offer you. Because I think this, it's a very important position to fill, and we need everyone involved, but giving us the authority to go out and say, okay, but these are the options. Let's see what we have and bring them back to the table and see how many of them stuck. And then give you guys a choice of the next direction you want to go. But we'll, you know, we'll try, you know, just, you know, advertising the position, you know. I know we have to fill it right now, but, and I know, but under these times, I mean, yeah, we could say we're under the gun, but right now we're under the gun for everything. But I'd rather take this slow and steady rather than rushing something. So that would be, yes, that would be my recommendation, is if you just give Lynn and I the authority to see what's out there to bring back to you.
I'm, I'm going to then withdraw my motion and I guess offer an alternative, which is that the, we, that the board authorize our administrators to develop a, develop a position and advertise for it and report back to us their results. Is that what you're looking for?
This is Cheryl. I don't think it was that. I think, I think they're talking about exploring various scenarios. I would add again that one, one scenario is to advertise and hire a principal. Another is to create a new position that could be a part-time administrator doing other duties. What I think I heard Chris saying is that they would like to explore a variety of options right now. And I'm fully comfortable with that.
Okay, well, if they're going to go spend, they, if they, if they're going to advertise for a position, they need to know.
I don't think, they just said they were going to advertise right away. I think, Chris, did you or not? I didn't, I didn't hear you say that.
No, I think, I mean, I think that'd be part of, one of the options is that we want to put all different options out there and see what sticks and come back to you and say, this, you know, this worked, this didn't. So I think the overall motion would be just to, yes, we would like the administration to explore the various options and models to hire an administrator for the Athens-Grafton School.
And then come back to us. The only reason I'm pushing on this is that you can't legally advertise for a position that doesn't exist. And that was the only reason why I was concerned about whether or not we needed, you needed something in the way of, of an authorization from us. Absent that, you know, go for the gusto, I suppose. I just want to make sure we're covering you.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to post until we came back with options for the board to choose from. Because ultimately, you know, like I said, you guys decide on how and what you want that position to look like. It's just our job to bring you candidates that you can choose from.
All right, then the record will show that I withdrew my motion. There is no motion, but we gave the, our administrators guidance. I guess that's what we have done. PG, all right, then let's, let's move on. Because I'm mindful that we probably, some of us might want to eat dinner or do other things. Let's see, where are we at? Old and unfinished business for this discussion. We have a couple of interrelated items, community relations and governance. And you'll see later on a, an item about the advisory bodies. So let us try to combine those a little bit. And Lynn, I had asked Lynn if she wanted to take point a little bit on the governance part of this. And then we can talk about the advisory committees and their task. I was also provided with some sort of ex parte suggestions from Cheryl. So to, to start, Lynn, do you want to talk a little bit about the governance part of this?
All right. I've had a question as to exactly what is the governance? It's never really been explained. And what is it that we need to come up with? It doesn't seem like we've done anything in that realm. And I'd sort of like us to put together a starting point to start thinking about so that we can come back at the next meeting and do a little bit more planning.
I'm going to answer it in part, but other people will want to talk to this as well. One of the reasons why governance has been sort of frozen is as of now, we have an interim articles of agreement that were imposed upon us that we failed to voluntarily adopt because we didn't want to. And we're still holding out hope of a favorable decision by the State Supreme Court. And my interpretation of the two meetings we had on this subject were that people were at great pains to make certain we did nothing that signified acceptance of the interim articles. And modifying those interim articles would constitute acceptance. So that's part, that's partly why it's been frozen. However, we are going to eventually get a decision, and it would be nice to have some plans. What we can do without accepting the interim articles of agreement is have elections based upon them noting that we are doing so under protest. And that was what was in the, what was in the warrant articles for the meeting we didn't have on April 9. And that was the reason for that, for both the language and that proposal. But long-term, we need to have someone take point on one of two possible options. Option one is the Supreme Court, to my delight, rules in our favor. If that happens, we're going to need to have a plan to resume regular activities. And that is more of a challenge than you think, because we have a number of people that if we went back to the original plan, would be sitting in positions that wouldn't vacant a year ago, under the original plan. Option B is that the Supreme Court finds some weasely reason not to overturn the lower court's decision or puts it off to, puts it back to the lower court and just extend this out indefinitely. In which case, we really do need a plan for how we go forward. It's certainly convenient to have a two-two-two governing board, but it doesn't represent the voting majority in the communities. That's one issue. And people need to decide if they want us to have this sort of interesting hybrid, where Westminster folks get to vote on Grafton representatives and Grafton folks get to vote on Westminster representatives. That's the current model. We've never subjected that to a community-wide discussion to see if that's even remotely acceptable. And what we've done as an interim step, without violating any, violating any legislation, any legislative guidance, without violating our, our standing before the, before the courts, is we've set up these advisory committees that are, that are technically part of town government, not the board, but we treat them as if they were. And that's the structure under which we're operating. It's a little weird, but it kind of works. But that's, the question is, for me is, do we, as we go forward, do we institutionalize these advisory committees? I know folks in Westminster seem to think that's a good idea. Given the quality of the people we have in, in Grafton, I kind of think it's a good idea too. And who's going to manage the process of drawing up new articles of agreement? And I think that's an open question. I've been telling people that have volunteered to be on our advisory committees, that that's something I would like them to take on. But we've never had a formal vote delegating that as a task to them, and we probably should. So that's a long-winded answer to a short question. Where do we want to go from here? Yes?
So are you saying that we would charge the advisory committees to come up with ideas on the new governance to then present to us? And is that something we can legally do?
We, in, in the old form, when we originally had, when we were talking about merging all the districts into one great big district, we had what were called, I think they're called Article Nine committees. And these were committees of the, of the towns in consultation with the, with the boards that were involved. And I think that model can be extended to this. It's essentially the same thing. It's just a little more formalized. And I think it's also a way of giving our advisory boards something that's absolutely in their wheelhouse to do without requiring them to come to four-hour school board meetings. Not that they don't enjoy them thoroughly. So that was my thought on that. But that was my thought. But I'm just, you know, in terms of this, I'm just one guy talking. I'm not the board. Yeah.
If we were able to go that route, are these meetings that need to be warned? Can the school board members of the towns meet with these meetings? If they're not warned, how would that work?
It's an interesting question. I think that they would have to be warned, but they'd be warned, but they are town committees. So the towns would have to warn them. I did cover that with our, with our town courts at the time. I would, just because we would have, we would anticipate members of school boards showing up and possibly quorums of those boards showing up. If only to provide a little guidance and throw their two cents, I would assume that we would have them warned jointly by the, by the school district and the towns. I, again, we warn, we warn all our committee meetings technically, but we can, it simply can have as an agenda item, discussion of governance as the agenda. And till such time is ready with a proposal, that would be sufficient. But that, I think, is the architecture of the thing. Any people, people must have turned on and off their, the screens, because people have moved all over the place on my, I assume. Any, any thoughts, folks, such as Cheryl, Melissa? Keep on seeing Jeffrey up there. It's throwing me off.
Well, this is Cheryl. I did have a couple of thoughts. One, one is that if we, this issue of advisors from the towns and advisory treaties from the towns is really important. Having said that, we're in a position now where we canceled the April 9 meeting, which was initially to be the time, the time when all the voters of the three towns would come together to vote on a variety of things, including electing board members and approving, approving a budget. We're in a holding pattern right now, waiting to get advice from the state about how we can safely hold an election in these towns. And we still have as a priority. And we still have as a priority fulfilling really what was the agenda for April nine? Again, electing board members and approving a budget and other matters as necessary. I'm feeling like this is very important, but not as high a priority as thinking through what we need to do to get ready for that vote and that process when the time comes. We've got really goodwill people. I don't think it's the best use of their time right now to figure out how to upgrade those articles of agreement when we're really trying to do things even more fundamental than that.
I, I'm going to recognize you a second, Chris. I think the issue here was twofold. One was recognizing that we do have a plate that's full to overflowing and wanting to make certain that our advisory folks were engaged. I do know that at least in one or two instances, there are business and family emergencies that really may make it very difficult for them to be active participants. And that is a concern I have. But I, I think it's not inappropriate for us to define sort of a set of things we'd like the advisory boards to do and find out if in fact they'd like to do them. And that's really why I think this is a legitimate issue, even if we don't eat up a lot of time on it tonight.
I certainly, I agree with that in principle. I'm just, we absolutely need all hands. Thank you.
We may pull them into other things. I hope, one thing's about everybody being homebound is they can't run away. We know where they are. Chris?
No, I'm good. I was just going to add, it reminded me to add something on is that talking with the Secretary of Education today, you know, they're, they're saying no, you know, no, you know, budget votes or anything like that during the month of April or May. But some of the things that the House Education Committee are looking at right now is different ways to get budgets through. And what that looks like, there are a couple of different options out there they're looking at is one is that having given the local authority to approve based on the 2019, 20 budget and have that one. And the other one is also give the locals authority to go ahead and use the 21, but 20, 19, 20 budget with a 4% increase in that spending. But if your budget that you were going to propose to the, to the town was under 4%, then you would just go with the budget you were going to propose. So just to know that's out there. It's, they're going to talk about it more on Friday up at the house. But I wanted to put that out there before I forgot.
Our budget was in fact a reduction, even though after they cut our small schools grant, it won't look that like it. I don't know which, which we are, if we are an increase under that rule or a decrease. But I guess we'll find that out when you're, when you have information. We still have to have elections somehow, but maybe that's going to get delayed once again. I'm not happy about it. Alrighty, that's, that's helpful. Where are we on our, Lynn, do you think we, is there anything else further we ought to touch on with this?
Should we be inviting these advisory board members to these Zoom meetings? So that they get a feel for where we're at and what we're thinking we would like them to do?
I think that's a good idea. I don't have the, I don't have the Athens list. I have the, I have the Westminster list. And I have, I think I have the Grafton list, but I don't have the Athens folks. Should I cut, do you want to, or do you want me to contact the board chair and find out where they're at?
I have that list. I thought I had sent it to you, but I will make sure I do that tonight.
All right. And then, yes, I think that, that we should formally send out a notice to them. It's no skin off our nose to do that, to administratively to do that. And I want them to have the opportunity to know how to connect into the meeting and not have to necessarily scramble to find it on our webpage. It's not a big imposition on anybody's part, and I actually value their input.
Okay.
I will, I will send a note to Chris and to Lynn and to Sue, reminding them and giving them that list so that they can be formally included in our email notifications. Jessa, Saihan?
Yeah, I just have a question. Since it's already April, we haven't had a budget meeting. In fact, we don't even have a budget warning. It puts us so far out. We're going to have to start the beginning of the year on the 87%. Is that correct?
No.
No.
No, right now, we're waiting to see what they vote on at the House and the House Education Committee. Because like I said, they're looking at trying to give local authority to go ahead and have the budget from last year and possibly 4% increase, but you guys should be, that says you guys will be okay.
And that plan on voting, something will happen before the start of the fiscal year on that?
We've been, there have been, there have been daily phone calls to the point where they're going to stop wanting to answer my phone calls on this point.
And we know something more by the end of the week. I should have more information, but they're supposed to be continuing to the conversation. And I don't know if they're voting on it or not on Friday, but that's the next time that they're looking at it. But yeah, they're moving quickly on it. They, my understanding is they will have something in place surrounding budgets well before the fiscal year ends.
It's becoming known as Chris Pratt's bill or Jack Fire's bill, depending on who they're yelling at the mall house.
Okay. Cause I think there's like, there's 13 districts, something like that, that don't have a budget.
Yeah.
18 or 19.
18.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, there's 19. In the past two weeks, all of those districts have been meeting together to discuss. You know, that's why we're so on top of the bill stuff, but yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Chris, I would certainly suggest that if it's useful to have the board chairs of the affected districts either testify or even just have a resolution in common, that would be, if it helps move the ball, I'm more than open to doing that.
No, I think at this point, we're in good shape because all the superintendents caused, caused their, called and emailed their legislators. It's supported by the VSA and the VPA. And so I think we're in pretty good shape. The two things they're looking at are the two things that the VPA and the VSA supported and actually pushed for. So I think we'll have a decision sooner and later, but I think based on what we've recommended and are really pushing, it should meet the needs of most, most, if not all of the SUs that either have a budget voted down or haven't have a budget voted yet.
That, that would allow us to still do the election, but in the summer or even in the fall, if it comes down to that, that was, that was the other part of the thinking I heard is they want to, Will Simmons and others have said they want to make certain that our, that's safe to even have that vote. And that it's not going to cause any anxiety from our, from our poll folks or from the, from the town clerks. So there you go. Thank you, everybody. That, I think that was important stuff to understand and get out to the community. I'm now taking a quick look where else we are at. We've covered governance and community relations. Covered the principal's report. We have, we, I mentioned, we know nothing on Act 46 that we didn't know before. They, they are actually meeting the judges. I don't know what they're doing, but they're meeting. So maybe something will happen, but I guess I wouldn't count on it. We have budget review. And I put this up partly because I knew there was some sentiment about making addition, looking at additional reductions in our budget if we present a budget to the taxpayers. Do people want to tackle this at 8:11 tonight or what would we like to do? Don't all talk at once.
I guess that's your answer, Jack.
Well, I see Lynn's hand up and I think I saw a house shrug halfway from Jessa, which I interpreted as an interest in speaking to it. So Lynn, since you were more enthusiastic, I'll let you start.
From what I'm hearing tonight, I don't know that there's much we can do budget wise. It seems like we sort of need to wait and see things play out before we know where we are. That's, that's what I'm getting from the conversation.
Yeah, Jessa?
I really don't, yeah, I don't think we can do much tonight because there's so many things up in the air, both locally with the legislature. Reading the news and the tax revenue projections and all that in Vermont, I think we're going to have to revisit our budget within a few months. I don't think it's going to be good and we should start preparing for that now. But I'm not at all interested in doing it until the voting is done in the legislature regarding the fact that we can't vote on a budget and see what the state Supreme Court comes back with.
I, I concur, although you didn't, you may have noticed from reading the papers, it didn't exactly stop the executive committee of the boards having a very vigorous discussion about making all sorts of cuts the other day. I, I will say without getting into it that, that those discussions are, I think were heard and I know that administration is trying to do what they can to figure out what might work to make some changes before the start of the next fiscal year. The problem we have, of course, is that when budgets are fixed, and this came up in the legislative, in the legislature, even if we, even if we cut the budget in half, we wouldn't be able to return any money to the taxpayers for this year to help them with Q4 taxes. And that's just reality. And the legislature and the AOE is most reluctant to have the 19 districts hack their budgets when the other 100 plus have approved budgets that they're perfectly happy with. And even if those, but if the, if those towns, if those districts made cuts, they couldn't return the money to the taxpayers in a timely manner. I've suggested to our legislators that that might be something they might want to look at. But the reality is they've got such a big hole. They're looking at a $90 million hole just for what they know right now. It's more than likely it'll be closer to 120 before they're done. And they're essentially have no room in meals tax. They have no sales tax and that is a third of the education budget comes out of that money. And there is no place it's coming from. The, I talked to Brad James earlier, thinking that, you know, the money would go to the state and that the state would relay it to us. But the way that the CARES Act is written is it goes directly to the towns. And as I say, it's, it's, it's less than 20% of the revenue shortfall being incurred by Vermont. So nobody's going to get free cash out of this thing. And we, the way that the law is written, the towns are on the hook. Whether the state for collecting the money, whether taxpayers can pay it or not, they would have to go borrow it. And that is the structure under which we have operated. It's never been put into question because we haven't had a great depression in the last 70 years.
Right, Jack. And Jack, the, the actual numbers for the, the deficit from the meals and rooming taxes is about $88.7 million.
Right, right.
That's how high it is right now. And we, we've just started this. So that's why, you know, you're seeing what we're seeing right now in regards to trying to predict what's going to happen with everything dropping so quickly. I mean, they're, on the other end, you know, speaking to, you know, all the superintendents in our monthly meeting or from around the state is that it's, it's just as difficult for those towns who voted on the budget, who can't do anything with them and now wish they could. So you see, you see in both sides of it. It's a lose, lose situation for everybody. Those who haven't voted on budgets and those who have voted on budgets who wish that they could go back and do something with the, with that money.
Well, also in the CARES Act is a provision that says that you have to make a good faith effort to retain your staff as they are. And if you don't, you might have the, the money that you're being given as a grant may turn into a loan that you have to pay back. And that doesn't, that, so essentially that's yet one more guts you in the way this thing is, is written. I, I think I mentioned that the $31 million is not, by the way, exclusive to public K to 12s. It also goes to private schools. And if you look at the details, the formula, it's very generous to private charter schools. It's somewhat less generous to public schools. And if you look at the amount of money is 15 hundredths of 1% of the total bill is what we're looking at for Vermont. And it's, it's, given that Vermont's one of the states most impacted by COVID, that's, that's pretty insulting, but there you go.
I think in a lot, a lot, and what, you know, what I'm seeing is in a lot of ways, you know, we're trying, you know, at least as superintendents, we're trying to find ways to bring costs down. And but when, you know, you, you already have contracts with, with teachers and that's not unusual around the state. And then you're looking at 80, usually 82% of anyone's budget is tied up in salaries and benefits. And then the state says, well, if you, if you're letting go of your employees, you might not get this money or you're going to have to pay it back. It's really difficult for superintendents to try to find ways to cut funding because it's either going to, it's going to be in non-professional staff and programs.
Yep.
And that, and it, no one wants to do that either. But when you have these many stipulations put on what you can do to get the cost of education down because you're sensitive in regards to what taxpayers are facing, you're really limited with options by the time it goes from the federal to the, to the state, down to the local. Very limited in regards to what we're, what we're trying to, trying to do without, you know. So.
This won't necessarily reassure anyone, but the, the various board chairs have had a variety of collective and individual ex parte conversation with both Chris and Lynn, who I've got to say get it and get it in spades. And I know that they have been doing some, what I consider quite drastic and creative planning. It's not fully baked, but I'm looking forward to that. And people will, I think, notice the effort they put in when they finally make the announcements about this in the next coming weeks. So whatever, that sounds like something Donald Trump would say, stay tuned, but you know, there you go. All right. I guess, is there anything, we don't have any appointments, right?
No, none.
All right. Is there anything, anybody thinks we've missed in all of this? Very lengthy conversation.
Sleep.
Well, I guess I'll, I'll hear director's comments and then we'll entertain a motion to put this one to bed. Starting from Jessica, because again, you're on the top of my screen.
Oh, thanks. Oh, what a mess. All of this, that's really it. I can tell you already, there's people in Grafton really concerned about Liz leaving. That's, looks like it's going to be a big issue for some people. And they're obviously worried about our school. They're worried about budgets. They're worried about taxes. And we're all homeschooling our kids at the same time. So yeah, this is a yeah, this is a really rough last quarter of the year.
Lynn, you're, you're next on my list.
Well, for those of you that are in the trenches there, I very, very much appreciate all that you're doing. It's, it sounds like you guys have just been doing a phenomenal job getting the word out to the kids and working with the kids. And I see the bus go by. And I just know it's taking food and stuff to the kids, and it's heartwarming. So thank you for everything you're doing.
Melissa, can you? Going to get her a phone, I think is what we're going to do. Get her a phone, I'm going to get Charles one too.
She's putting something in the chat.
I'll, I'll read it aloud just for, I'm grateful for all the extra work that teachers, administrators, and supportive staff have put in. Thank you for all your work and the food deliveries that help us not leave the house. Cheryl?
Well, I certainly echo the comments that others have made. Thank you. I'm, I'm reviewing the agenda, Jack, and we didn't address every topic that's on the agenda. Having said that, I think you probably skimmed it and saw that the remaining topics were not urgent, didn't require action, and, and so that's fine. Right. And that's fair. It looks like Chris is raising his hand to say something. But again, I echo the thanks to, to everyone. And this is, we're, this is an extraordinary time, we all know it. I didn't answer the question earlier about whether we revisit the budget. The budget that we developed with the principals and the staff and all of that was a very thoughtful one. It is, it doesn't make sense to me to try to make cuts at this time. I think we need a more thoughtful process around all of that and much, much more information. And so, and, and a budget, people, a budget's approved, but all the expenditures don't have to be made. And so we'll have some, the superintendent's staff will have some flexibility around that too. So in this very complicated time, I think we've addressed the actions we needed to take tonight, and I appreciate everyone. Thank you.
Chris, you kind of did the last word?
Yeah, remind you, I think there's one thing that we needed to want to talk about with the board is that was the, their early retirement.
Oh, do we need an approval?
I, I think.
Do, don't we? Or do we? Thank you. I, I, I screwed that up.
That's not on, that's not on this agenda. Is that an SU agenda item?
It was an SU proposal that I need, that I neglected to remember. We needed to amend the agenda. And this will take 10 minutes, but what's? I'm sorry.
Sorry, everybody.
No, I, this, I, I completely forgot, partly because I didn't have David Clark waving his hand remind me we needed to talk about it. Here's, here, among the things we have been looking at for, for cost containment is offering early retirement to those teachers who may either because this is not what they signed up for in terms of instruction or because they may have legitimate concerns about coming back into school buildings next fall, may wish to take early retirement. We have thought as a cost containment item, as well as a personnel item, that was, it'd be reasonable to up the stipend offered for early retirement from the $7,500 that's in the CVA to a higher figure. There were two figures bounced around. And this would be a hint for David Clark to get into this if he's online. David? Well, guess I'm going to.
Hey, Jack, yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
I am. We are, we, we are making a belated discussion of the early buyout because we need a vote of members on this. And you had a proposal you discussed with the, with the teachers' union. And I'd like you, and there were two numbers batted around, and I'd like, I'd like you to briefly discuss this and then tell us what number you'd like us to approve.
All right, Jack. Very briefly, the collective bargaining agreement states that a teacher with 20 years service in the district, a 403B plan can apply by October 1st for early retirement. And that early retirement would take place at the end of the school year following October 1st. The early retirement stipend, the contract is $7,500, and that contract pays out in August. In other words, the following fiscal year. Now, the discussion with the association was that it would be a total of a $15,000 stipend payable over two fiscal years. And in discussion with the executive committee, it was decided that what with boards were intending to offer, and the boards need to approve this, would be a total of $10,000. And the re-opener would be open through May 15th. Teachers with 15 years, not 20 years of service, would be eligible for the early retirement offer. And a teacher who elected to take it between now and May 15th would receive $7,500 in August 2020, which is the 2021 fiscal year. The balance of $2,500 in the fiscal year 2122 fiscal year, that would be August of 2021. And there is one other stipulation, and that is that teachers who did take the early retirement offers by October 1st, which is the contract date, would also receive that additional $2,500 stipend in August of 2021. And the association indicated a willingness to enter into a side letter agreement if it were necessary to do so. Although this is not strictly a negotiation because it's all our money, and they would be on the receiving end of that money. So a motion from the board would probably be to offer early retirement buyouts up until May 15th. Total of $10,000, $7,500 to pay out August 20, and $2,500 to pay out August 21.
I will entertain a motion to that effect, if anyone would like to make it.
This is Cheryl, so moved.
All right, then we can have discussion on this. Jess, I see your hand up.
No, that was just me seconding, seconding.
Okay.
Putting in a second for that, whatever the plural term is for.
Well, does, is there any discussion of this or any clarification that needs to be made? I think David pretty well laid it out for you. I will tell you, we haven't done the, since we don't know who is going to take advantage of this, and we don't know what we're replacing them with, can't cost this thing out with the level we might want to. But there is a belief that virtually all these folks are on the higher end of our payroll, and there are going to be a lot of teachers who, new, new to the area, especially entering, new, new, new teachers, who really may not have a a huge amount of options besides us that may find us the most attractive thing out there. That's the theory. So if people have any questions beyond that, I'd be curious to know what they are. We have a Quaker meeting on our hands. I guess then I'll entertain a mo, I'll entertain a vote on the subject. Call the question. All in favor, please say aye. And we're going to do a roll call, so you'll have to take your mics, put them off mute so that you can do that. Aye or not? Nay, Jessa?
Aye.
Lynn?
Don't know what happened.
Aye.
Melissa, wave your hand or something?
Aye.
Oh, there's a voice.
Oh, you got it?
Cheryl?
Aye.
Okay, and I don't believe we ever got, we were able to get Charles. Lynn wants to say aye, either, but she can't, can't vote. I can see her hand waving up there. All right. Is there any other business before this August assembly?
Jack, I just, this is Cheryl. I just got a couple of messages from other Westminster Advisory Committee members, and I have the same problem. I couldn't find the Zoom information on the website tonight. And apparently it wasn't publicly posted. They were trying to find it as well.
It was on the website. That's actually where I found it, but it, it's not exactly easy to find. And I, and I think that's a discussion that I'm going to have with, with Lynn and Chris about making that stuff a little bit easier to find for the civilians among us.
Absolutely. Thank you. Very important.
Yeah, I can, I can add to that. There's been so many meetings, we're trying to keep them updated on the bottom of the page there. We have the little Zoom mic on. But I think, from my understanding is, if I went back and look at it, is there, could have got confused with the meeting above or below it. Because you have so many meetings, you, you have so many numbers you can call. But that's usually, that's where you can go to access the meetings. You know, with everything going on, we still have some bugs to work out in regards to finding the best way to make it accessible. But the meetings, the Zoom meetings are usually on, in that window towards the bottom of the page. And then our board agendas and minutes, if you click on school boards, you go in there, those are now separate out into agendas and minutes, so you can get it there too. So.
We're, 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 any of the folks here, do they find it, you know, easy or sort of impossible to find? Nancy, are you clearing your screen, or did you want to say something to this? There's a little button on your way, lower left hand if you do want to speak to us. Gosh, I wish I could get, I still want to go and provide tech support, and I don't think anybody's going to let me. There we go. Hi, guys.
Okay, hi. We can't see ourselves, but that's just fine with us. I, I had.
You look great.
Well rested, I guess. Hardy, Hardy found it out after a while, and so it was easy for me, but it, but, because he told me, but you have to scroll way down. So unless you know you have to scroll way down, it's hard to.
I think the secret is trying to get on earlier too, and that gives you time to figure it out. I'm not the, a technical wizard here, but with a little time, I could usually find everything. I think would be able to do that.
You know, maybe, maybe a note on the agenda scroll or a note on something just saying, you know, keep scrolling, because it's down there. I didn't, I didn't go far enough, you know, down on the page. It, it's a small thing with everything else going on to try to, so have somebody take the time to try to fix it. So even just a note, just keep scrolling down till you find the Zoom.
Fair enough.
That's it.
All right. And has everybody been heard from this evening? Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn and to all those who weren't direct participants. This was one of the longer movies. I wish it was one more entertaining. Chris, you can't entertain a motion to adjourn as much as you'd really like to. Anybody else want to do that?
I move to adjourn.
All right. All in favor, turn off your computers.